Are we ready? Lillian, just make sure you hit the record button.
I just did.
Thank you.
Okay, ready to go when you are, Mr. President.
All right. Special meeting of North Smithfield Town Council. This 2020 is called to order.
I don't have the prayer.
Prayer and a pledge, Madam Clerk.
I don't have the prayer. I'm so sorry.
Deb would know.
I know, I don't know it by heart yet, I'm so sorry.
We who are about to die salute you.
My gosh.
Stand for the pledge.
Can't stand either, I'm sorry.
I don't ask. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Bartamoli, here. Mrs. O'Hara, here. Mr. Oger, here. Mr. Zulinski?
The President.
Mr. Rennel.
As we get going, I know that we have the Budget Committee on board with us and others that are on with us. I'm going to ask you to remind you to please mute yourself so that we're not hearing your conversations in background unless you're recognized by the council. If you do, I appreciate it, thank you. Next item is open forum pursuant to public law 42-46-6D with a maximum of 15 minutes. Is there anyone out there wishing to speak under the open forum?
We dominate the streets. Mayors and governors must establish an overwhelming law enforcement presence until the violence can be quelled.
We know who's doing that, Lillian?
Unfortunately, I can't tell.
You can't tell.
... defend the life and property of their residents.
Oh, found them.
It's the 374.
Yep, I got it.
Okay. Is there anyone out there wishing to speak under the open forum? Is nobody wishing to speak under the open forum?
I had to unmute them just in case because there's a couple of landlines, but nobody's speaking up, so.
Okay. I guess there's no one wishing to speak under the open forum then. Next item, presentation of the Budget Committee proposed 2020-2021 budget. I'm going to, I can see that Mr. Rowe is with us and I did see that Regnanesi is with us. Not sure if the others are with us as well. As the chairman, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rowe if you...
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I will read the presentation from the Budget Committee now if you would like. And the Budget Committee has completed the preparation of the town's fiscal year 2021 budget. The budget was prepared during the COVID-19 pandemic and we were mindful of the potential long-term economic impact this outbreak could have on our citizens. Most of the economy is shut down or partially shut down and we believe a budgetary discussion related to the economic effect of COVID-19 should be considered before a final budget is issued. Accordingly, as of now, we have made no adjustments to the budget but rather prepared the town's 2021 budget, assuming business as usual, and have highlighted below certain expenses that should be discussed to determine if any COVID-19 adjustments should be made to fiscal year 2021. Before we consider the impact of COVID-19, our 2021 budget reflects a 1.7 million or 3.7% increase over the current budget. In comparison, the 2020 budget...
Lillian, we lost his voice.
Do, you cannot hear me?
I can hear him.
I can hear.
I can hear him.
I can hear him.
You're the only one, Mr. President.
Okay, shall I continue?
Okay, I can hear everybody now.
Okay.
That call.
Okay, I'll continue. In comparison, the 2020 budget reflected a 1.1 million or 2.5% increase over fiscal 2019. The following is a reconciliation outlining the significant changes from the 2020 adopted budget as proposed by the Budget Committee. The 2020 adopted budget was $45,66,000. The differences between that and the proposed 2021 budget, we note that the contingency fund has proposed to increase $55,000 and that's fund balance restoration increase from $45,000 in fiscal year 2020 to $100,000 in fiscal year 2021. In the area of the police department, there's a $294,000 increase, that's mostly salaries and overtime pay increases. The fire department shows a $93,000 increase and all of that is service contract increase. Looking at the highway department, there's $160,000 overall increase, however, $150,000 of that is an increase in the road resurfacing budget. In terms of rubbish disposal, the solid waste disposal, I'm sorry, I've lost the, okay, the solid waste disposal increase was $35,000. Employee benefits increased by $167,000 and that's an increase in health insurance, pensions, and the other post-employment benefit contribution. In terms of the school department, the town appropriation increased by $446,000 and state aid is projected to increase $290,000. All other departments' changes net were $121,000. So the proposed budget, $46,727,000, it's a $1,661,000 increase or 3.7%. The proposed levy increase calculates to 3.75 and that has not been finalized as of this point. The committee's proposed budget is approximately $20,000 higher than the town administrator's budget of approximately $46,707,000. The significant difference is attributable to capital expenditures. We added $5,000 for a traffic data collector for the police department and $15,500 for a Lucas chest compression system for the fire department. At this point in time, we'd like to state our COVID-19 discussion and consideration. And I'll go on by saying unlike many other towns and cities in Rhode Island, North Smithfield does not rely heavily on revenues from tourism but rather on the backs of its taxpayers. The latest published statistics reflect 17.8% unemployment for April for the entire state compared to 14.2% for North Smithfield residents. The unemployment rate skyrocketed compared to last April when the town had a low unemployment rate of 2.7%. Based on the high unemployment rate, we believe a budgetary adjustment related to the economic effect of COVID-19 should be considered. Although we have listed potential cuts as noted below, we still wanted to be respectful of the financial needs of each department. Accordingly, we have highlighted certain adjustments noted below that would reduce the 2021 budget to be equal to the prior year increase of 2.5% and that's compared to the above proposed budget of 3.7%. Most of the town's expenses are tied to contractual obligations, examples, union contracts, rubbish removal, et cetera, and debt service requirements. The remaining budget expenses that could be scaled back would be a reduction in the workforce, which we did not consider, and non-contractual overhead expenditures. Below is a recap of expenses that could be considered to help minimize the impact on our taxpayers during this crisis. And you can see we did another reconciliation, the Budget Committee's proposed budget, the $46,727, and some potential adjustments. We would propose considering doing a reduction in the fund balance restoration of $100,000. The original budget was $100,000. A reduction in the OPEB of $125,000, that would be cut in half from the original budget of $250,000. And road resurfacing, we had originally had a budget of $600,000, we proposed perhaps cutting that by another $100,000. And on the schools, the town appropriation, we are looking to reduce by $121,000. There's a projected currently $350,000 surplus from COVID-19 in the current year budget. And finally, in the capital area, there's a new street sweeper we propose to move half of the cost of that street sweeper into next year. That would reduce the potential 2021 budget to $46,191, which would be equivalent to a 2.5% increase. And I'll go on by saying that the above 2021 budget with COVID-19 adjustments reduces the levy to 2.03% and again, that's not finalized. If you were to consider a zero tax increase, an additional estimated adjustment in the amount of $635,000 would be needed. This would have an effect of reducing the fiscal year 21 budget to approximately $45,556,000. And we had a couple of notes, the school department is expected to realize significant savings related to such expenses as transportation, salaries, tuitions, utilities, et cetera. When the Budget Committee met with the school department several weeks ago, it was noted the savings related to this crisis could be as much as $800,000. The school department subsequently adjusted the projected savings to now be only $350,000. And one other note, as noted in the town's audited financial statements, our fund balance has increased by over $2 million during the last two fiscal years and we could expect another healthy increase in net fund balance for fiscal year 2020. It appears that we are in adequate financial shape with average monthly cash and short-term investments of $20 million and could weather a year of potential shortfalls in revenue. And that's the Budget Committee presentation, thank you very much. And we would be happy to answer any questions.
The reductions that you're, that you put on there, potential recommendations as we deal with the pandemic, they total 536,000.
Yes.
And then if we were going to a zero tax increase, it would only be, it would actually be an increase in the budget of $490,000, correct?
Well, you would have to reduce it further by another $635,000 in our estimation to get to zero.
Zero tax, though, would still be an increase in $490,000 of...
Yeah, yes.
That's, that's what I wanted to get out there to make sure that people were aware of that, that zero tax is still an increase in spending. Are there any, any questions of any council members? Mr. Zulinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rowe, thank you and to the committee, I appreciate all the work that you have done. And looking through this, I see that there's roughly a $20,000 difference in the proposed numbers until we get further on into your narrative between the administrators' proposal and the Budget Committee. It's almost to the penny. I do appreciate the Budget Committee taking a look and trying to reduce the percentage from roughly 3.7 down to 2.1, what was the number again, Mr. Rowe?
2.5.
Yeah, that's what I thought, my glasses are failing me. So done a great job. The $20,000 roughly, I'm rounding up, swing was basically in two capital items, one for the police department, one for the fire department. I certainly will be looking at this a little sharper. I do, you know, if we have over 14% unemployment in the town of North Smithfield, a lot of people are worried, I'm worried, I'm sure the Budget Committee is worried as well. Some of those jobs are not going to be there for a long time. I'm going to be an advocate to cut as much out of this budget as possible to keep the taxes as low as possible as we recover from this COVID crisis that we're facing. Again, I truly appreciate everything that you've done and hopefully I'll be able to do some type of workshop with the Budget Committee, we're going to have more public hearings. But I still see that we need to cut back because revenues are going to be tough and folks are going to be really struggling just to do the basic necessities, so thank you. I really appreciate your time.
You're welcome, you're welcome, thanks.
Any other, any other council members? Comments or questions or any comments, questions from the, the other members of the Budget Committee?
I have a, I have a comment, Mr. President, and a question too.
So is you.
I also want to thank the Budget Committee for putting in the effort. I know this is never easy to put together and adding COVID-19, I'm sure it's even a more daunting task. I was just curious, I know you guys use estimates to gauge kind of where things are going and I know it's probably too soon to get, has there been any updates in terms of anticipated revenues related to say motor vehicle phase outs, anything like that, school department funding? I don't, I know the state started to slowly open up, I don't know if there's been any future projections. And then I agree with what Mr. Council Zulinski was saying, I think we need to do everything we can to protect the residential taxpayer. 14% is a high number and I know you guys took that to heart in your deliberations as well. And my last question is just to really Cynthia, I was wondering, can we get an Excel copy of this if possible? It's a little tough on paper and I don't know if there's a way to get a breakout of what's contractual and what's not. I know like a lot of salaries and overtime is, but I don't know if there's anything else in there, just to know like it's kind of hands-off in the discussion, you know?
Um, I can get it for you in Excel and as far as contractual, I can probably maybe make it a different color.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, it doesn't need to be anything fancy, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, I'd like to compliment Mr. Oger about asking for copies on itself. Cynthia?
I know, I know, Mr. Zulinski, you want it really big. Just big.
No, not that big. If, if we could use legal-sized paper and we've used ours, I'll be able to see it and I'll be able to...
I'm going to get everybody big, big ones for next time.
Thank you.
Bravo.
11 by 17, Cynthia, works better.
Yes, absolutely. It just, the presentation was a little hard to do 11 by 17 and still be the same. But yes, I'll definitely have bigger copy for you all and I'll, and I'll get Excel for whoever wants it in Excel electronically.
Thank you.
I would, I would say give it to all of the council members. Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes, before I leave, I'm in a neighborhood where you can walk safely, there's a lot of older people. And to back up what you're saying, there's a real concern about what's coming forth because many of us are on a fixed budget and as you get older, there's health expenses, et cetera. And, and they pointed out to me that they were concerned about taxes and services within the town. That was two things that concerned them. So as we go on, pay close attention to that, I myself would appreciate it.
Mr. Zulinski?
Between, the only thing about this stage of our life, they say golden years, it's what you're paying out, not what you're getting in.
Mr. Zulinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. To follow up on Council of Harris' comment, the numbers we have here for revenue as of March 31st and Cynthia, I'm sure you're going to update when we do the next spreadsheet so we know exactly where our revenues are. Not looking all that bad actually, but two more months of revenue would be nice to see, yeah? Thank you.
Just for the record, our, our tax revenue is, is still at 98% collection, so as far as tax revenue, we're doing pretty good and the state has given us all the money that is budgeted, so yeah, I'll update that through May 31st.
Thank you.
For, for next week's meeting if we have it.
Well, that's, as we are having a meeting, we're scheduling a meeting for next Monday.
Okay.
For public hearing on the budget. It may be continued to another date, but we will begin the process next Monday.
Okay.
Everyone should be aware of that, that same bad time, same bad channel, should be doing the budget, budget only, budget, it's a public hearing on the budget only. And then, then we'll have a regular meeting the following week and then we'll be back again with the budget on the following Monday, should be, let's see, I'm counting for me, but the next, the next, the next month, every Monday in June, we'll be having a meeting, whether it's a regular meeting or a budget meeting. So next Monday is, will be a public hearing on the budget.
That's the eighth and then the regular meeting, the 15th, and then another budget meeting on the 22nd.
Right, and potentially the 29th will be setting the budget. I think we're going to end up waiting that long because as far as I know, the state legislature hasn't come back into session yet. And, you know, I mean, restaurants are open now for in-dining, I think the state legislature can get back in business and at least get the budget going because we're not the only ones waiting on this, everybody in the state is waiting on this. There is some other stuff that they don't need to take care of, budget they need to take care of, we need to know, everyone needs to know where we're going with that, so hopefully we'll have answers as we go along further into the month. Any other comments, questions on the budget?
I just have one more question, that's okay, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Oger.
So I guess along with the updated revenues, Cynthia, it goes back to what I was asking the first time, is it, if we do get projections in terms of funding for certain things like school funding and/or any type of guidance from the state, is it possible to get an update in terms of what those numbers would look like? If there's no change, there's no change, but just kind of seeing that in real time might be helpful and also I don't know if this, is the school department set on the $350,000 in terms of the projected savings? And I was going to ask, is it possible to get kind of like as they're getting guidance, is it possible to get a guidance in terms of what they're going to be projected to save if, if it does materialize into a savings? And then, I don't know, is it possible on the capital side to get an idea of what we've purchased in terms of like police cars, fire, like any type of vehicle over the last three years even? I'm, I'm just trying to gauge in terms of if we're looking to potentially make cuts, it's going to be a tough budget cycle. I don't know what we're going to end up doing, but it just wouldn't be useful to have as much information as possible to make the conversation more meaningful.
So capital, what's been purchased in the last three years?
Yeah, well, like what we spent, I don't know, even if it's just an old document, it all, I mean, it doesn't need to be anything fancy. Whatever you have available.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mrs. Bartamoli?
I was going to ask, the information that Doug is looking for, the asset management committee has been, has met, would that have some of the information?
I don't, I don't believe that their report is even close to being done.
No.
This COVID thing has kind of thrown them a curve as well and so they're behind, they're behind. And, and it's quite a daunting process to go through to do an asset management thing. I know that Cynthia's working with them, Tom is working with them as they're trying to gather information and put it into a format, but I know that they've kind of fallen behind a little bit with what's going on. I know this, they continue to work on it, not as, not as quickly as, as they were hoping to, but it's, it's not something that, I don't even think it's ready to come out yet and they want to make sure that they have everything lined up before they do.
Okay.
That, Mr. Zulinski?
I agree.
So that's, that's where we are, we were hoping to get a report from them.
Right.
Like in April, we were hoping for a report from them. Obviously, it's, it's not happening, like a lot of things are not happening, so it's, it's still a work in progress for them, so we're going to have to kind of look at capital right now. They, they're weighing in on capital, I know that they're ready to weigh in on capital, so get something from them on what they're recommending for capital, but also they're not doing just single years, they're looking at capital over five years, 10 years, 15 years, they're looking long-term stuff as well. And so they're going to cap, I know that part of what their process is, is to come up with something that shows this is what you need to be budgeting on a yearly basis to meet five, 10-year, 15, 20-year capital plans in place. And so that's, that's what the big part of that report is. And so as we go through budget year to year, need to be budgeting to meet those plans that are in place.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I thank the, Mr. Rowe and the rest of the Budget Committee for your work up to this date and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be meeting face-to-face to discuss this in a little better detail.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item, all business, discussion by Council of Other Action on update of municipal building review task force. I really don't have a lot to update you with, we, we haven't really been meeting because of the social distancing and we're not quite up to speed with the Zoom meetings and whatnot. Work has been continuing. Secocean Associates are continuing to do their contract administration, they've been in contact with the chair. We're trying to close the project out, obviously town offices have occupied the building. It's, it's a work in progress. I think that they can attest to that, that right now it's kind of a shakedown cruise on a, on a ship where as now we're in the building and we're using it, we hit these little things, okay, we need to address this, we need to address that, we missed this, we missed that, little things like that. But the process continues, they're in the building, it's working, it's up and running. Hopefully we'll be up and running in that building soon as well. That's really all I can, can give you.
Mr. President, a question please?
Yep.
Is there any, do you have any idea what the forecast will be for the task force coming back with a recommendation on the, the annex?
I've been told that we're, we're meeting for next week to get, now that, now that they've reduced, they've relaxed the restrictions on a number of people meeting, we're looking to have a meeting next week to, to discuss the Kendall Dean project and begin stuff for the annex again. I don't know the exact date that we'll have something ready, but I don't think it will be that long once we start meeting again and we have something for the council.
Who has a telling? The only people unmuted are council members, Cynthia, David, and Gary.
And I don't have, I don't have a TV on or anything.
I'm not anywhere near a TV.
I don't know what's happening.
Picking up someone's signal somewhere?
Maybe, but no, everybody else is muted.
I don't know.
Mr. President, why we have this downtown?
Yep.
I had the opportunity to go into KD Town Hall the other day to sign some paperwork and I think the residents are going to be very impressed with the work that took place over there, it's a beautiful operation, it's, can't wait till it's open to, for the public to see.
Yep, me too. Anyone else, any other comments?
Mr. President, I have a quick question. I'm not aware, do you know if we have made our final and full payment to Kelson Corp yet or is it because things aren't finalized, we're not?
Not on the agenda.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know. I didn't know they were both way there.
Sorry, Mr. President.
All due respect, Mr. Zulinski, it's on the agenda as an update from the municipal building task.
Oh, but it's not itemized as on the agenda, I was just trying to...
We'll have to discuss, I was just curious, I mean...
The, the update is, we haven't closed out the project yet in Kelson.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, well, it's not listed, so...
I mean, it was an update.
It's an update. I can't tell you what they wrote, but they're not paid, they're not paid out yet, we haven't closed out the project.
That's fine, thank you.
Anything else on Kendall Dean project? Thank you. New business, discussion by Council of Other Action on building bonds.
Mr. President?
Stephen Turner invoice number 3137 dated 4/30/2020 in the amount of $1,415.50, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Motion to approve by Mr. Zulinski, is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Motion to approve by Mr. Zolinski. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Very none, roll call vote.
Pardon me, yes. Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next item, Stephen Turner invoice. Number 2859. Date. 2019. In the amount of $2,609.66 has been signed off by all parties necessary. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Zolinski, second by Mrs. Baramioli. Uh, under discussion. I just think we need to note that the date on this was 8/31/2019. That was a long time ago. I think that, I don't know if Mr. Jesus can look into this and find out. What other things are out there that long, if there's, or if this is the only thing that's lagging out there, but.
Yeah, that makes me concerned because every time we update the bonds. And what I have left, these little things come up.
That's why I asked that question.
I never have an actual number. I, it's, okay.
That's why I'm asking a question. We need to make sure that.
Okay.
They're invoicing and 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 issuing the paperwork to us. So. As well.
Okay, I'll call Lisa tomorrow.
Roll call vote?
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next item is Gilbane Company invoice number J08248.010. Dated May 12th, 2020, in the amount of $41,367.75. For the North Smithfield Science Lab renovations. All parties have signed off. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mrs. Baramioli. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Zolinski and Mrs. O'Hara. Any, any discussion?
I would just, it just really hard to hear. Is it, I don't.
I think it's Mrs. O'Hara's background.
It looks like there's somebody else, like Phil, Phil's not muted, is it?
Phil doesn't have volume.
A volume, okay, it just, it's just hard to hear, that's all.
Yeah. It's her, see, Claire. She just has to unmute herself when she wants to talk because it's her coming back from her.
Gotcha, okay.
Someone watching TV at her house?
Sorry.
So Claire is utilizing someone else's residence.
I know, but see, now she's trying to talk and we can't hear her because I muted her, so now I don't.
She said, okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're good.
We're good now?
Gonna go with hand signals now, okay.
Hey, I I would imagine a lot of people would like to mute me, so.
Roll call, roll call vote, Madam Court.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council vote or their action regarding the allotment of bond funds related to the Halliwell School property. Mr. Zowski, this was at your request?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, and Mrs. Davis, if you could go to the uh, the spreadsheet that says ride reimbursements work to date, please?
That's me.
Or Lillian, if you are running the show here?
Sorry.
There we go. Yeah, that one, okay, yes, please. Um. As Cynthia indicated, um, just a couple of minutes ago, it has been. Difficult to be able to get our arms around where these numbers are in the, the uh, the big picture as it relates to both the. NSES addition and the work being done at the high school to renovate the lab, uh, the science labs. Um, we received this sheet. You can see it's dated April 20th. Um, we received it a few weeks ago. When I received it, I was happy to see that, as you can see in the um. A little beyond halfway down the sheet, it says unused money to date. That, as I looked at that. I was encouraged. Um, because frankly, I I hope every councilman, a councilperson recognizes that we need money at Halliwell. And this program has gone forward with a basis that $300,000 be set aside for decommissioning of Halliwell. And it's my perspective that that's a drop in the bucket to what we really need at Halliwell. So as I saw this spreadsheet finally and see that there was some savings. Um, or rather, let's put it this way, the work that was involved in the guaranteed maximum price for Gilbane at NSES, the top line. Uh, was 149,000, came in 149,153.43 under budget. Um, there were some other items, the testing and OPM services and such that also, you know, added to the um, the surplus. Um, including a contingency that went unspent as the work came in. Um, at less than the guaranteed maximum price. But certainly that's not a criticism of what has happened uh, in the project to anyone. Uh, if if anything, we um, should be very happy with that. Um, but the question comes up, okay, the, the, the total 3,237 and the other numbers weren't necessary. What happens with that? Um, of those available funds? Likewise, with the, the work at the high school. Where that project um, is, is being well managed and coming in with a, an expectation to be under budget. And the net of all of this, it comes down to a circumstance where, okay, there is work left to be done. There's a design fee to be paid for. Uh, the, the locker rooms and um, some window work as proposed here. The estimate for the locker rooms is $233,000, $233,780. The school department has made a unilateral decision that they want to use $210,000 to replace more windows at the high school. And I think it is a fair question to come back to this council and say, do you agree with that or do you disagree with that? As it relates to an opportunity to be able to provide more funding for what needs to be done at Halliwell. I won't say that windows should not be replaced at the high school. We need every window that hasn't been replaced in that building replaced at some point in time. There can't be any confusion about that. I had, I was an advocate for the windows to be replaced in the laboratories, the science labs that were being renovated. The, by Gilbane, because we were gonna be essentially in a brand new suit with, you know, crummy old shoes. Um, and it, it especially as the, the, the interior finishes were being done. It made a lot of sense to go forward and replace those windows at that time and make everything. Um, a, you know, be a project that was oriented to a finished product, not something that, that got done and then got changed later. So, the, the, uh, and frankly, I've had a discussion, uh, I tried to arrange a meeting with. Um, between myself, the council president, the school committee chairman. Uh, the superintendent of schools and the maintenance director. Uh, schedules wouldn't allow that to happen. I went forward with a meeting, uh, just the superintendent and the maintenance director. They, uh, and they have reinforcement later on from the school committee chairman. That, you know, this becomes a circumstance where if you don't spend the money on the windows, you're gonna be giving up some reimbursement. Uh, from the state under the safe and dry parameters. I understand that. Um, that would be um, a circumstance that I s- I certainly would regret. But I'm also looking at the situation of saying, what are we going to do with Halliwell? You know, I think it's fair to say that for the past 25 years. We've turned our back on that property. And what I'm saying today is I've had enough. I think that if we've had savings, as it appears that we have, based on this spreadsheet provided to us in late April. That we should give consideration to keeping some of that money to add to what is available to be able to deal with Halliwell. So, um, it, it, it is a complicated question because the, you know, I think from the school department side, they say. Well, you folks contributed by way of the bond. Um. Somebody's to help me, maybe, uh, Mr. President, you can, $3.3 million or something on that order. Um, for a bond, uh, and oh, perhaps.
The school, school bond was 4.3 million.
Okay, thank you. So the, while these numbers totaled something that, you know, with the guaranteed maximum price and I just lost the.
I know, I'm coming, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's coming back.
Those totals are something on the order of, uh, what?
There it is.
5,700,000 dollars. Uh, and we put in, um, the, um, what was it, Mr. President?
Total bond was 4.3 million.
So 5.7 versus the 4.3. The approach from the school department side is, yeah, well, we exhausted your 4.3 million dollars. Uh, it, it, the, the balance of this is happening by way of school department funds that the town council has nothing to say about. Um, well, again, I look at that and say. We, the town provided, I would say, something on the order of 66% of every dollar that's going in there. The school department furnished the rest. And uh, it's convenient to simply say that, well, we get to determine what happens with the tail end. And the town council has no say in the savings that happened on the front end. So I'm asking you to uh, and join me in this argument that some of this money should be held back for. Um. The additional work that needs to be done at Halliwell. Uh, because there is far more to do there than we can do with window money at North Smithfield High School. And um. It just, that, that needs to be done. Um, you know, granted, the windows need to be done, but you also have to deal with Halliwell. Maybe you have other ideas as to where we're gonna get money to be able to deal with this, but um, right now, I am actually fearful of what we are gonna be. Seeing at Halliwell as, as time goes on. Uh, we've been warned by the trust that we should be concerned about mold with those buildings all closed up. Uh, as we go into the summer season, some of you may remember that in a hot, humid condition years ago, when the buildings were closed up. Be under a prior superintendent who, who organized and and maintenance director who organized work in one building at a time instead of, you know. Uh, crews continuing to work in their own buildings. We, a mold bloom at, at Halliwell that costs a lot of money to put down. There's already two buildings that I believe are unsalvageable as it relates to mold problems at Halliwell. I'm not looking to find more of them because we didn't have the money to be able to deal with the circumstances.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes, Gary, what was the exact amount that was put aside for the decommissioning of Halliwell School?
The, in this, in this bond distribution at the outset, uh, when the work was authorized for Gilbane to proceed. The, the allotment was $300,000.
And how much?
That is still what is held for Halliwell.
Now, you're saying that the school department wants to utilize that money for windows?
No, what, what happened is the, the work that was authorized in the two Gilbane contracts that were guaranteed maximum price. They weren't fixed price contracts, in essence, like some of our other work where they were unit price type things or. Or, or work that needed to be bid out and then finally determined as to what the cost would be. But guaranteed not to go beyond the 6,237 and the 2,466. They both came in at lower values. And what I'm saying is some of that savings should be reallocated to Halliwell. As opposed to being reallocated to an expansion of the work at the high school. Which would be, you know, the work would be $200,000 of additional window work.
Well, well.
Already expanded the window or the contract to include more windows.
There's no question, Halliwell has to be attended to now. There's not an idea of waiting any longer because the damage will be outstanding and I support you in what you want to do. I think it's a necessity. They can live with these windows, but as time goes on, uh, what's happening to the grounds, to these buildings, um. Will be so costly in. Losing more and more because once those windows are closed, that's when we first had mold within many, and I had never seen mold in 25 years.
Well, keep in mind, the window work is proposed at the high school, not at Halliwell.
Oh, I realize that. I know that. I think Halliwell should be taken care of, uh, first. Money should be kept there.
Any other council members?
Are we voting on this tonight?
Um. Let me see how it's worded. Could be. We'd have to, someone would have to make a motion. We could be. Um, I think it's a, it's important, though. To understand that. Even you gotta step back and look at the whole big picture and and this has been evolving over time. Some of us weren't even on the council when this began the process. And the numbers were put in place. I know I've inherited some of this and and that's okay. It goes with the territory. But the reality is, is 4.3 million dollars was, was set aside in a bond. And it was spelled out. What it was for, it's well detailed, and part of that was either decommissioning or demolition of Halliwell. Didn't say like one or the other. And they never really had a firm number put on it. And if you go back and look through council minutes over those six years, you're gonna find different councilmen, different councils at different times. Put different values on it, 300,000, 400,000, for demolition, for securing it or whatever. The biggest thing that I was disappointed in when we went and walked through, and I had seen it before, we actually had that open house a couple of months ago. I had actually walked around the campus one day when it was nice in the wintertime looking in the windows. And I was seriously disappointed in the condition that that facility was left in when the school department walked away from it. I was really disappointed. I compared it to people that live in a house and aren't paying the mortgage. And then when they get four clothes on, they just walk away with the clothes in the back and leave a dump sitting there. That's what I saw when I walked in, when I walked around that school and I was really disappointed. They left it in that condition. Just to clean up the mess that was left. I bet you it's gonna cost us $50,000 to $60,000 just to go through and clean up those buildings so that they're ready to do anything in. To get rid of the stuff that was left behind and the messes left behind, never mind securing them and making sure that they're more weather tight and more secure. So. I think that we need to find out, we need to do a couple of things. We. Watch the bond money that we have control over. There is two separate pots of money coming from this. One is from the bond of 4.3 million dollars. And the other $2 million is coming from the school department's fund balance, which we don't have any control over. But they're still getting reimbursement on that. They still apply and get the reimbursement rates from the state on all of that. And so that's a re, that's the revolving fund that they talk about. So if they spend a million dollars and they're gonna get back up to 40 or 45% of that, they get, they spend a million, they're gonna get $450,000 back. Which they can in turn spend on another project and get 40% back. So if they spend it. Properly or not properly, but wisely and efficiently, they can take. $2 million and turn it into 2.5 million or 3.5 million dollars, depending on how they go about doing the project. But 4.3 million dollars is still under control of the council, so we need. Getting back to your question, Terry, do we need to take a vote in this? Maybe we do need to take some action to say, we need to watch out with the bond monies that we have under our control. To make sure that we can do something that we need to do at Halliwell because that's what the bond stated. That's something was supposed to be done over there with this bond money.
Right, and because I don't want. It says it's under ride review right now? Is that correct? Is it under ride review?
The additional work that they want to do out of the, out of the revolving fund, yes.
Okay, um. Because I, at this point, would like to say. Stop on the windows until we figure this out. And go along with what, Gary, I mean, I don't, I'm not looking to fight with the school department. I would like to, that we can sit in a meeting or Zoom meeting, whatever it may be. But, um. We have to address Halliwell. And how many windows are we looking at for $210,000? And how many windows are we looking at for $210,000?
Why, I, I don't know, I don't know that, but you, you got to understand that the two different things there. There's a revolving fund, which is, they're capital monies, which we've contributed to in previous budgets, put money in there, 100,000, 200,000, at different, plus they put their fund balance into that, to use as a revolving fund. What we're talking about is, you've got a bond that addresses certain things, and, and some of, and we knew, just like the other two, the two other bonds that were done at the same time, none of them had enough money to do what was stated to do with them.
Right.
It, the, the issue is, is, is global on, on all of the bonds, and it's not to say something was wrong or any, you know, it's not anything did anyone wrong, or something like that, it's just the reality of it is, is there was never enough money to do all of them. The school luckily had a surplus that they put into this thing to start addressing some of these needs. They probably have $8 million worth of work that they need done in their school buildings over, over the course of the next 20 years. And that's what the revolving fund can do, and we could put another bond out if we needed to, to do certain things and whatnot. But I think the, the important question right now is, what do we want to do with the 4.3 million dollar bond? How do we send on that bond in regards to what can we do at Halliwell, and what do we need to do at Halliwell to make sure that we have enough funds to do something that we need to do? I'm not saying that we're going to fix it up and use it for whatever purposes, this is just to secure and make sure that we don't go backwards with it.
Oh, no, I agree, like you. I mean, the day we were there, I said it looked like it was a bomb scare, and they never came back. They never came back to class.
Well, and, and if I might, Mr. President, you know, that just demonstrates, it's just, you know, how we as a town, whether it's the school department or the town in general, have just constantly turned our back, and, you know, the attitude was, well, it's going to get demolished, so just leave all the stuff there to let it get taken away when the buildings are demolished. Well, that just increases the cost that's left behind for the town to clean up. And, you know, I'll add that, you know, you just heard from the budget committee that the, the forecast is that the school department will have a surplus this year because of the, the distance learning circumstance. They still have funds available to them to be able to commit to windows, thermostats, and heating units at NSCS, and other things that they need to do. I don't argue that those things need to be done. The question just becomes, should it be being done with this money? They will get the state reimbursement when they do the work, if the money comes from their surplus, or the money comes out of this set of, excuse me, resources. But what will happen if that money goes into windows or some other circumstance that is an expansion of the scope of work that was originally planned for the, these two projects? What will happen is you will not have enough money at Halliwell. And I don't believe you have a, a place to turn to, to be able to get that money, and it's going to be your responsibility as time goes on to figure out how to put that place together as long as possible while we evaluate the, the overall. I had thought about putting a 50, 40 to $40,000, maybe $50,000 request into the 21 fiscal year budget request to do a study, to do a land use study of the Halliwell property, as we have previously discussed and was recommended at the, the gathering that we had at Halliwell to address what to do there. And as I started to look at that and say, wait a minute, we're going into a, a budget challenge that is very difficult. We're talking about a budget without knowing what we have for a target in the way of aid, and so how do I justify putting a $50,000 study into that budget when we have money available to us to be able to do it with the bond funds? And the, the, include, whether it's the $300,000 that we already have, or anything that we can add to that from whatever pot of money, but, you know, we, we could easily spend close to a million dollars at Halliwell between demolition and reconstruction. Just look at what needs to be done to be able to make the restrooms and the kitchen serviceable at, in the, the cafeteria that, that exists there. That isn't going to be a $50,000 project, folks. That's going to be a substantial amount of money to be able to make the, the building has, that has the most attractive possibilities useful in some near-term circumstance. You need money for that. And do I, again, I'll say, do we need windows replaced at the high school? Every one of them that hasn't been replaced. Should it be done with this money? No. That's my position.
The other council members?
Mr. President?
Mr. Zawinski.
Hi. Um, reading the budget committee's report, they said that they had met with the school committee, and there was an 800, at that time, projected 800,000. Then subsequently, the number changed to 350,000. Now we're looking at potential estimate for windows of 210. We have a horrendous problem, but let's, let's not run from this. Halliwell needs to be addressed. I, I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but I'm just wondering if yourself or the administrator has met with Mr. Lombardi or with Superintendent St. Jean to have these discussions?
I have met with Mr. St. Jean and Mr. Seapy, that, and I've had, had follow-up email exchanges with Mr. Lombardi. That initiative, I would have to say, Councilman Zawinski, was not productive.
I, I, I'm not prepared to vote on this, as he, there's not a soul on this meeting that would probably disagree that windows need to be replaced. Leaky windows lead to rot, a lot of problems. Leaky roofs and mold over at Halliwell, I mean, there's a lot involved here. So I certainly would like to hear from the school committee, because if they're going to be getting back money, if they're going to be getting a percentage back of this revolving fund, that's a wonderful thing, we need to take advantage of it. But I'm not prepared to vote tonight until I, I, do you think there's a possibility, Mr. President, that we could have a meeting, a, a Zoom meeting with the school committee to work through this, so we know exactly? I don't know what's going on, I haven't been informed, I didn't know that the administrator had conversational with Mr. Lombardi, that's a good thing, thank you. But, but I would like to be involved in these conversations as a council member, one of the five.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes, Paul, the initial sum.
Which, which Paul, which Paul you?
Okay, Mr. Zawinski, at that time, was at the meetings. Gary, I don't know if you, you may have, you were there also, that 400,000 was put aside for Halliwell. It was not 300,000. And I don't know where that change came about, but, you know, I, I, I think speaking with them would be all right, but as far as I'm concerned, you know, Halliwell has to be addressed, and in whatever they get back from the revolving fund, then can go for windows at the high You have to see that school to believe it. And I'll never forget how I saw it. Has to be addressed now, I, I believe Gary's right on with this one. Absolutely.
When, when the original bond was passed, the school department had three projects, in addition at NSCS, the science classrooms in the high school, in the locker rooms in the high school. Those were the three projects, as well as demolition or decommissioning of the Halliwell School. It wasn't stated whether you were going to secure it or demolish it, it wasn't, it wasn't determined at the time. Like I say, I know if you go back and look through different councils, I don't have them with me right now, but I know that at, at different times during the course of this process, different councils put different amounts of money, saying, this is what we need to do, we need to put so much aside for Halliwell. One was for debt, one was completely for tuition, and another time it was, we're not demolishing the school, but we're going to, and the reason they didn't want to demolish it was because they didn't have enough money to demolish it. That was why they eventually backed out of it, so they put money aside, and I believe you're right, Mrs. O'Hara, it was $400,000.
Absolutely.
For the decommissioning and securing of that site for future. And so.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lombardi?
May I speak?
Yes, you can.
So I, I don't know what's going on. I'd like to address the council, but I, I want to be very clear, the money that was given to us through, through the bond has been expended. We are getting approximately 40% of that back, and that we are using that to continue to rehabilitate as like a revolving fund, and getting another 40% back. We have not used any money, and we have not done anything outside of what we presented to you over two years ago. It is a possibility you weren't on the council at the time, but we did a master plan, we have never changed any numbers, per se, I mean, if it was 300,000, the council voted on that, to the best of my knowledge, it was over two years ago. We have efficiently spent all our money, all of our projects have come within budget, and we have rehabilitated it, used that money to spend more money that is, again, 40% reimbursed. We are efficiently using our money. We had the plan that was presented a number of years ago, and we have not deviated from that plan. So I don't understand where Gary is coming across asking these things. We have communicated back and forth, and what we want to do on the school side is continue to invest in the schools that need substantial work, not kick the can down the road. We are not asking for money. We are using our surplus, or whatever, we're using the bond money that was given to us by the taxpayers, and we are using our surplus to continue to use a revolving fund to get this 40% back every time we spend the money. And we think that's an efficient use of the money. In regards to Halliwell, whatever money was put aside, was put aside, there was no debate, we haven't changed it. I don't know, I, I think it's 300,000, I always thought it was 300,000. We have not changed that number, and the, the town demanded, Gary demanded, that we turn that property over. So we turned it over. So I don't understand what the issue is. He should have said, turn it over and, you know, and, and do XYZ. That was not a requirement. I, I don't, I don't, so I, I'm shocked by these questions, statements, I don't know what's going on. For me not to be invol, invited to the meeting where you're talking about schools is a little bit of a surprise to me. I thought we had a good relationship where I have to call in, I have to get, you know, and, and be blindsided, completely ridiculous, but whatever I can answer, but we're not doing anything wrong, we're doing everything perfect. You haven't here heard a problem come out of the schools.
We're not saying that you did anything wrong, Mr. Lombardi, and, and to be fair, I think the administrator demanded that you turn the property over. There were questions asked of the council of what we wanted to do with that building, and the council couldn't do anything until the school department officially turned it over to the town. So we didn't demand it to happen, it was a request of the school department of the town to do something, and we needed it to be turned officially, it wasn't in our possession at that time.
Well, you saw the emails, I don't, I'm not going to make them public, but you saw the emails, so.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't demand it, and we're not saying that you're doing anything wrong with the funding on this thing, we're trying to make sure that we have enough funding from that, from that bond money to take care of Halliwell, which was, it was supposed to address. That's, that's what we're talking about. So we're not really trying to get into how you're spending your money.
But it's no longer.
The town is spending, the town, how the town is spending the bond money, that's what we're trying to get, get our hands.
The bond money's gone. It's gone. So now you're going to use the 40% that's reimbursed for a non-school property? That makes no sense to me, I'm sorry. And again, I'd be more than happy to, to, to work with you, but then who's going to give us money to do the windows? It doesn't make any sense by taking money, I'm sorry.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Zawinski.
I, I would like to go.
I'm very taken aback here because I, I just heard tonight that there was a, a move to take a vote on this, and then by asking a few questions, I wanted to know if conversation took place with Mr. St. Jean and Mr. Lombardi. I was told during this meeting that it was. I'm certainly, you know, my initial feeling was, I can't vote on this, I'm definitely not voting on this this evening after hearing what Mr. Lombardi said. If we can reinvest money and then have that revolving fund reinvest, why would we lose that opportunity? Now, Halliwell has to be addressed. And honestly, I think it'd be, if we could accommodate this to have another Zoom meeting with Mr. Lombardi, the school committee, and the town council, Mr. St. Jean, and Mr. Zawinski, the administrator, I, I think that would, we'd all benefit and we'd have a stronger understanding of what's going on there, because right now, I'm not comfortable, I, I'm not going to vote, take a vote one way or the other this evening.
Mr. Oger.
Thank you. I, I echo with what Mrs. Zawinski was saying, you know, I, I think we need to have a conversation with the school committee, I think it, it's the only way to really get the answers that we need. You know, we just talked earlier how that the potential savings from distance learning was 800,000 to 350K, and when I asked, was that their finalized number? It was determined, no. We don't know what that number is, that number could be lower, so to speculate that we could be seeing a 350K savings is just, it's not fact. So until we can get clear resolution as to where that money is coming from, I don't feel comfortable voting on it as if, if that is a true, true savings. I also would like to know, what is the surplus of the school department right now? It's just, it's something that we should know. You know, everybody's going through a tough budget time, you know, we're being asked to look at our budget line by line and potentially make some of the toughest cuts we've had to make probably since the Great Recession. And so I just, I, I would need to know, where, where do they stand financially before I feel comfortable saying we're going to pull that money directly? Because what I don't want to see happen is, we pull for windows, and we've been talking about now mold, and now potentially the work that we're doing in the school department, that work gets kind of deteriorated because we're turning a blind eye to certain areas that we need to reimburse and fix. You know, also, you know, what does the potential loss reimbursement look like? Even Gary said that there could be some, some reimbursement issues from the state if we pull some money from that. So is that true? What, what does that look like? You know, I, I agree Halliwell needs work, you know, when we did that joint meeting there, that, that, that was hard to see. And I don't, I, I don't think any one of us is disagreeing that that work needs to be done, but I think we need to find a balanced solution that allows us to fix the issues at Halliwell, while still maxim, maximize the amount that we can use to fix the issues there while still meeting the school need. And also, I, I was curious, the, the land use study, if we use that, is that allowed, do we need a state's opinion on that? Is that, is it for educational purposes? Like what is the direct language of the bond that allows us to use this money? If there is bond money, is it, we can use it for anything related to Halliwell, or is it just to tear down? I just want to know kind of what the language looks like to of that bond.
Do that.
May I speak?
Yes, sir.
So I, I think, I believe the word is decommission Halliwell, so the use was to decommission Halliwell. But again, let me say this, we've already used all of that money, that money is, is long gone in the sense that we had to spend much more to do those projects than what the bond had. So we had to spend our surplus of a million plus dollars. We now are going to, we do need an HVAC system in, in the elementary school, which is going to be, which is going to cost money, and again, hopefully we get reimbursed on that, and that is a HVAC issue, especially going back to school. The other thing is, I, and I did email this to the, to the town administrator, and I, and I'll say this publicly, is, Talwell needs a bond, Halliwell needs some substantial money to be rehabilitated. I support that 1,000%, but to take, I don't know how much they're even requesting to take from the schools, doesn't make any sense to me. That, and that's what I mentioned to the town administrator, it, it makes no sense.
Mr. President, may I?
Mr. Zawinski.
I'll go back to the beginning. The reason that I have this on the agenda tonight is because in April, the end of April, we received this spreadsheet, which is the first time that we had an indication as to where these two projects were trending as it related to the budgets. We had guaranteed maximum price contracts that we had to keep money available for, we finally see a scenario where money has, the, the full extent of those guaranteed maximum price contracts is not necessary. As I said earlier, it's not a criticism, it's a happy circumstance. The question that I put to the council is, should you be involved in the decision as to where the, as to the decision to expand the scope of work on the project using what was saved in the two projects that you approved? That's the issue here. That's the issue here. Mr. Lombardi can make all the wild accusations he wants about what I'm trying to do. All I'm trying to do is make sure that you know that there has been savings and there's a decision-making process going on where you're not involved to just make a decision to expand the scope of work, to include more windows at the high school and leave simply the three hundred thousand dollars left for Halliwell with no consideration to raising that number to something more substantial to really meet the challenge that you as the council have at that site. We've turned our back on Halliwell for, I'll say it again, probably twenty-five years. I won't be part of that any longer. Here is a time to make a difference in it and as to reimbursement, when the work gets done on those windows, reimbursement, they will qualify for reimbursement. It doesn't have to be with this money. Additional money from school department surplus can easily go into that revolving fund and yield that same reimbursement. So don't get, you know, confused by the smoke that's being thrown at you that.
Gary.
All of this money. You're not going to lose the money. You have to be committed to all of these projects and my concern is we're, we're going to be left with a mess at Halliwell that is going to continue to get worse by the hour.
I have a question though, if that's okay, Mr. President.
Mr. Oger.
So what do we, so, all right, so we have three hundred thousand, we're going to add to ten, just, just speculatory here. I'm just trying to make sense of this all in my head. I don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight. I don't think us acting, if, if we thought the school department, to use your words, Gary, was acting unilaterally, I don't think us making a decision tonight is in the best interest. It's not cooperative, but if we go up to five hundred. Wait, can I finish? Can I finish with the, sorry.
Don't put words in my mouth, Mr. Rozowski. I didn't, I had to make a decision tonight.
No, I'm not.
Gary, you're putting words in everybody.
Mr. Lombardi.
I'm, I'm just.
Mr. Oger has the floor.
Sorry.
I'm just trying to get a grasp on what is being proposed tonight. So we're going to go to five hundred and ten thousand. What are we doing with the five hundred and ten thousand? And how much of the money that is related in the revolving fund? If we put in some money for the bond and they put in some money from their general fund, what, what percentage of that revolving fund money is ours to even claim? So I think that the best way for this is for us to have a conversation, we're luckily in a budget conversation. Maybe the school department doesn't need to spend the two hundred and ten thousand until they have a conversation with us and we can figure out what, what's going on once and for all. We can get everybody in the same room. I, I don't feel like I'm informed enough tonight to make a decision. I, I agree with what Councilor Zawinski was saying earlier. I just, I don't feel comfortable voting. I don't really know what we're doing with the extra money by pulling it. If, if it was just for us to decommitment, can we use the money for anything else? There's no questions I have.
Mr. President.
Mr. Zawinski.
What a, what a great problem we're presented with this evening. If I could walk into Target tonight, spend ten dollars and get back four dollars, I'd be there now. This is a wonderful opportunity. Where else are you going to get a forty percent return? Now, earlier I suggested after finding out that there was conversation between the administrator, the superintendent and the chairperson of the school committee. I think we need to come to a consensus here. We don't know what the school committee is going to be left over with this year. Originally, as we all know, started with eight hundred thousand, it's three hundred and fifty, maybe it's not even three hundred and fifty thousand. We don't know. We will find out. I'm going to advocate one more time that we have a meeting. Hopefully, Mr. Lombardi, can you hear me, sir?
Absolutely.
Would you be amenable to meet with town council? Of course, this will be through the president. This will be Mr. Vaden's movement. He is the president, but I certainly would support a Zoom meeting with the, with the school committee and the town council so that we can figure this out because I certainly would not want to lose forty percent. Maybe some of that will go to Halliwell, but we have to figure this out so that all interests, in the long run, we have to serve the residents of the town.
Right.
And if it's forty percent, we can get a lot done, but we do need to do something at Halliwell. I would be very appreciative if some funding went to Halliwell and then we, of course, remain the revolving fund with the school committee to improve windows and anything else, air conditioning, heating, HVAC systems, whatever needs to be done. I would leave those decisions in the hands of the school committee. First of all, it's not my purview to get into that. I'm just looking for cooperation between the school committee and town council or the town council and school committee. There's no preference how we, how we list them. Hopefully, we can get that to happen.
To answer the question with Mr. Zawinski and Mr. Oger, here, let's, let's look at this thing simplistically. There's two pots of money. One is a revolving fund, which is coming from the school department surplus and a capital revolving fund under the new guidelines that Ryan Department of Ed set up. And then there's a four point three million dollar bond. And I think what the administrator is trying to get our arms around is, because this is our responsibility, we need to understand where that four point three million dollars is, where it's been spent, what's been spent and what's left and what's available. That's, I think, is what, is the bottom line of this thing. We're responsible for that and do you have, I don't have a good handle on it and I don't think either one of you two gentlemen do either as far as the two ladies on the council. That's, that's the, I think that's the crux of Mr. Rozowski's point. We need to get a handle on the four point three million dollars to find out where it stands. We don't have a good handle on it. I'm not trying to get involved in a revolving fund with the school department. I have, I've said this publicly many times in many places. I have complete faith in Mr. Sepe and Mr. St. Jean to handle the care and facility of those buildings. They're doing a great job and I've said it publicly many times, I put Mr. Sepe on the spot at NSCS saying, he's the one guy responsible for the condition of these buildings right now. So it's not a question of that we're trying to say, don't do this and don't do that. I think we need to get a handle on what we're responsible for and we don't have that right now.
So would you agree we should have a meeting with the school committee, Mr. President?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, but the crux of it is we need to understand as a council what we're responsible for, which is four point three million dollars and we don't right now. I'm hearing things from different people and I'm also seeing Mr. Hayes who's shaking her head saying, oh, no, no, that's not true. So collectively, the council needs to get an understanding of that. And I'm not going to be on the spot, Cynthia, I'm not looking.
No, it's okay.
A general statement that.
I just don't know how to handle on the balance of the bond yet because I'm still having, getting invoices from Mr. Sepe that I haven't seen since last August. So until I get all the invoices and know exactly what's been said on all of these projects, I can't even give you a balance of the bond.
And there you go, Mr. President.
And that's period.
And that's, and that, that's what I'm trying to get around is that as a council, we need to understand what's in that bond. And so we do have to have a meeting with the two boards and find that out.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do need to get our arms around it because that's our responsibility. The revolving fund, yep, that's the school department's responsibility. They're doing a wonderful job. I completely support it. We understand it, Mr. Lombardi. I think we've had that discussion many times. There's not an issue there. It's, it's, the council needs to get our arms around four point three million dollars that we're responsible for.
And I understand that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Just let us know when we're having the meeting. That's all.
Yeah.
I have to suggest, Mr. President, that that needs to be quickly because the project that is being addressed here will be being done this summer. So this isn't something that can, that's why, again, we got this sheet in late April. We tried to get an understanding of where we are. We see that there is a savings and we see that the scope is expanding to use those savings. That's what I want you to understand. I think that's what you're entitled to understand and I encourage you to have the meeting. I think it needs to happen very quickly.
Thank you. Let me, let me just make a statement, Mr. President. The three projects that were for the bond cost well over four point three million, four million. We used, so to get all these projects up and moving, we did use some of our reserve funds, understanding the whole amount of, the amount of money we have. We're within that amount of money we have. So if there's some money that may be left over in the bond per se, that's because we used our reserve funds to keep the projects moving. That's the only reason. So if we're now saying, hey, listen, we've got an extra couple of bucks here or a couple of bucks there, it's not that we didn't spend the bond. We've done, the bond, at least the amount on the bond has been spent. I mean, you know that four point, four million dollars was just Halliwell. I mean, it was just, I'm sorry, NSCS. Never mind the locker rooms and the labs. It was a million dollars. So that money is, is long gone, in my opinion.
I will have the clerk send out something looking for availability for a meeting.
Thank you.
Council and the school committee. I think if we're going to do these Zoom meetings, we've got a Monday meeting, so it's going to have to be during a week meeting, you know, could be Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday or something. I think let this week go by, there's a lot of stuff going on this week. Senior students on graduation on Friday, so the school department is more than busy doing their stuff right now and we've got enough on our stuff. So I think everyone on the council will have to be aware that it's not going to be a Monday night, so try to make ourselves aware, available on a different night. And so if the clerk, if Lily and you can send out something to all members and send it to.
Yes, sir.
Over in the school department and they, through the, through the chair, we can try to get a date that we can all get together.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may offer, if you want to do it maybe a half an hour before a meeting or something like that, we even call a meeting a half an hour earlier. Totally up to you, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I think this is going to be more than a half hour though, Mr. Lombardi.
Well, we're going to make a presentation and hopefully it answers all of your questions.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Let's see if we can get a date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, anything? I'll set Mr. Rozowski for now.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion by other action on transfer request for fire equipment repair. Mr. Jesus.
The chief had asked us if he, we would be able to move three thousand dollars from vehicle maintenance to fire equipment repair.
Is there funds available to do that?
Yes, this fund's available.
Funds available?
Yes.
Mrs. Zawinski.
Mr. President.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Zawinski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Baramioli. Any discussion? If we're none, roll call vote.
Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Mrs. Zawinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vaden?
Yes. Next discussion by council of other action regarding the board of sewer commissioners, sewer assessments submitted for the park viewed sewer extension and enlargement project. Mr. Rozowski?
Yes, thank you.
Is someone here from the sewer, is someone with us from the sewer board? Or you can handle this?
I think I can handle it. It is time to set the assessment for the properties abutting, the service by the sewer extension that was done now quite some time back, frankly. And it's been a difficult issue to try to resolve because the cost of construction, if you recall, ran up pretty substantially because of rock in the roadway, because of the water main that had to be relocated and because of soils in the roadway that were unacceptable and basically never should have been there. What I, Cynthia and I, the finance director and I presented to the sewer commission and frankly, as I understand it now from talking to Solicitor Igliozzi, this is a decision of the sewer commission, not of the town council. But out of respect for the council, I think it's important that the council know where the, the decision is, has been made and why. The, in the sheet that you have that has four columns on it, Lilian, if you can scroll to that. And.
It's sideways. Sorry, I didn't do the, yeah. Oh, I got it. Did I?
Go on, go down.
I'm going the wrong way. I'm sorry. I apologize.
All right, time. Keep going.
Did I end up?
Yep, one or two more.
It's actually the second page.
Yeah.
It's too far.
Going further into the document.
Far.
Further into the document. It's at the beginning.
Go to the second page, Cindy.
It's me, it's not her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Just think if this was big font.
You're way in the middle of the document right now.
You're on a different doc, yeah, there we go. We're digging closer.
There you go, right there.
Yay, we found it. Okay, sorry.
All right, I've got to get you, all you guys out of my way. In the first column, you have the estimate that was provided back in June of 2018. In the second column, you have the actual cost. And as the finance director can elicit, that is the total of everything, the engineering services, the, everything that went into creating, installing that sewer line. If you take those, that cost and simply divide it by the number of lots, it results in a total principal per lot of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-two cents versus the forecast that was twenty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars in the first column. The, what I proposed to the council, to the sewer commission, and they have accepted and put forward is that the, the cost of the water main was an unforeseen expense that could not have been identified beforehand and should not be the burden of the sewer users. The likewise with the cost of the, the soils that were unacceptable, that additional twenty-seven thousand, excuse me, the cost of that, I'm getting the numbers here, I'm sorry. Let's start at the top line, the total cost of nine fifty-eight without the cost of the, of the water main, it goes down to nine twenty-four, nine twenty-five, as you see, cost of the, the additional soil excavation or soil replacement, it goes down to eight ninety-five. What I believe we can do in this circumstance is use the money that we have in the out-of-district sewer fund, which was created to try to assist future expansion of the sewer lines, to do exactly what the infrastructure bank has done for the town and the water department as it relates to the expansion of the line onto Mechanic Street and North Great Road. We have a loan for a million dollars or one point four million dollars, we're only going to pay back five hundred thousand dollars. In this circumstance, the actual cost is nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. My advocacy to the sewer commission that they agreed is to base the assessment on the, the cost less the water main and less the soil and excuse that portion of the expense as effectively a write-off. Reduce the overall assessment to twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, still significantly higher than twenty-four thousand one hundred and seventy. But the best that we can do, along with a, an interest rate that is attractive today at, at today's rates, which Cynthia, what, excuse me, finance director, what we, were we at one point?
Actually, that's not the, I just realized, that's not the right, it was one point, that's not the right document, Gary.
Yeah, well, we got one point.
Can you go up a little bit?
Is it one point three?
I, I think it was one point one or one point two.
Okay, so we have a favorite, it's all right, stay right there.
I love it.
We have a favorable interest rate. You can go back to that same sheet, Lilian.
Okay.
The, the interest rate is attractive today to set this and these reductions in costs, I believe, are fair to take out of the, the burden of the users and leave in as a burden of the out-of-district sewer assessment account.
Finance director, I just want to make sure I was hearing properly. So the annual interest rate is less than one point five, which is currently up on the screen?
Yes, I had another document that was attached to that. So the, the quarterly payment was a little bit lower than what's projected on the screen to you.
Thank you.
So again, going back to the circumstance per the solicitor's guidance, the sewer commission has already taken this action to recommend that the, the assessment be at the twenty-seven thousand nine ninety-one thirteen. I simply bring it to you. I simply bring it to you, I frankly, when I had this put on the agenda, I thought it would be required that the council, um, act on it. Uh, it isn't necessary. It is here for information. Um, and any thoughts and response that you might have that, um, perhaps should go back to the sewer commission? But if not, this is the assessment that will be issued at 27,991 per, per household.
Mr. President, I see the sewer commission gave adequate information. 32 houses, 27 existing, five to be developed. And of course, the, the five to be developed will share in the cost. So I'm comfortable with what I'm seeing this evening.
You've in essence reduced the assessments by $2,000 per person by, by absorbing, by absorb, the town absorbing those unknown costs.
The sewer, uh, out-of-district sewer account absorb, absorbing those costs, yes.
Any other questions, comments from council members? I would just look for a motion and to accept, um, sewer commission's recommendation. We, it's not that we have to do anything about it. We could just accept it and make it official, I guess. Accept it and place it on file.
Yeah, that would be the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Zawinski, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Baramioli and Mrs. O'Hara. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Mr. Zawinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sound moved.
Motion by Mrs. Baramioli, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oger. Just a reminder, we are meeting next Monday. 6:45 right here. Scott?
I will not be present, but yes, you guys will be meeting.
Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Mrs. Zawinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes.
I will be sending you all the agenda for next Monday's meeting. I just won't be here. Joanne's going to take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
And good luck. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.